Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British 香港, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Spohr?
Here.
Mr. Seuss?
Here.
And me?
Present.
Mr. George?
Here.
Mr. Chizik?
Present.
Mr. Ward?
Here.
We have all nine members present.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have one other person now.
Yes ma'am.
Um, one event to attend, I have three other persons now to read, um, subject to final execution of a letter of understanding.
Any other additions or corrections? Then I need a motion to adopt the agenda as corrected.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 26, 2016, and the special meeting for general purposes of May 10, 2016. Motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive session held May 10, 2016 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information; May 17, 2016 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information; and May 24, 2016 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report and Dr. Stark.
Good evening. We may be winding down the year, but there's no end in sight to the good news. Here's what I am pleased to share with you this evening. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School students Emily Kouser, James Fleckenstein, and Jessica Veman, who earned first-place awards at the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Sciences State Competition, which was held on the Penn State campus. In addition to her first-place award, Jessica received an $8,000 scholarship from Penn State's College of Engineering, as well as the Perseverance Award for her five consecutive years of participation in PJAS. This year, 25 Bethel Park High School students competed at the 2016 DECA International Career Development Career Conference in Nashville, and three of our students finished among the top 20 in the country in their respective events. Congratulations to top 20 finalists Alyssa George, Natalie Lalama, and Sabrina Tatalius. Three students were top 10 finalists in either their events, test score, or role-play activity. Congratulations to Rachel McLean, Sean McLean, and Carolyn Vanna. The St. Clair Bethel Park Rotary Club presented Technology Education Awards to four Bethel Park High School students who have excelled in technology education classes. Congratulations to Evan Aaronhal, Noah Gearhart, Stephen Sell, and Jessica Veman. They were honored at a dinner held at St. Clair Country Club. Bethel Park High School senior Angela Burns is one of 20 local high school students who have been selected to participate in the University of Pittsburgh Cancer Institute's Summer Academy, a paid eight-week summer internship where she will work alongside University of Pittsburgh researchers in the Drug Discovery Systems and Computational Biology Lab, performing cancer research. Angela was selected through a rigorous application process. She was made aware of this opportunity through her participation in a week-long biology class lab held this school year in partnership with the UPMC researchers. If you recall, that was the lab where the students extracted DNA from their favorite snack foods to determine if genetically modified organisms were present. Congratulations Angela, and good luck with your research this summer. Bethel Park High School senior Bailey Lawrence will attend the American Wilderness Leadership School that will be held this summer in Jackson Hole, Wyoming. AWLS is an outdoor instructional program for students that focuses on conservation and natural resource management, along with leadership training. Bailey is one of 30 students from across the country who will be camping in the Tetons, whitewater rafting on the Snake River, and traveling to Yellowstone National Park. Congratulations Bailey. Bethel Park High School sophomore Claire McMaeans' tempura color study called Chaplain finished in second place in Congressman Tim Murphy's 18th District Congressional Art Competition. Her artwork will hang in Congressman Murphy's office for the next year. Congratulations to Claire. Congratulations also to Bethel Park High School seniors Ronnie Schiller and Carolyn Vanna, who were Bethel Park's High School's recipients of the Shazda Award presented by the South Hills Area School District's Association in recognition of their ability to overcome personal obstacles to succeed in school and in life. Ronnie would like to work with animals, possibly as a veterinary tech, and Carolyn is interested in studying business or actuarial science in college. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School senior Danielle Heinisch as its April Student of the Month. Each month, the Rotary Club recognizes a Bethel Park High School student for outstanding commitment to school and/or community. Dani is the Community Service Chair for the National Honor Society and coordinated several community service projects, including making fleece blankets for an animal shelter and coordinating the paint run at the high school to benefit SHIM. She has also been a three-year member of the Teen Leadership Corps, serving as a mentor to independent middle school eighth-grade girls. Congratulations to Dani. Sixteen students were inducted into the Bethel Park High School chapter of the Delta Epsilon Phi German National Honor Society. Congratulations to Macy McKittrick, Jonathan Lukidi, Joshua Sholder, Brody Flowers, Bailey Sims, Brooke Worall, Mason Bessard, Will Copeland, Sonia Habastreit, Rachel Holt, Alyssa Iam Pietro, Abigail Corrick, Caitlin Markovekio, Eve Rose Meyer, Holly Tresh, and Evan Welsh. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School senior Julia Angotti, who received the Bethel Park High School German Club Summer Study Scholarship. She will have the opportunity to study German for one week this summer at the Millersville University Summer German Camp. She was selected based on her outstanding level of participation in the German Club's activities, as well as her strong commitment to the high school's German program. Thirty-four Bethel Park High School students were inducted into the Société Honoreure de Français, the French National Honor Society. Their names are before you on the screen, but we would at this time like to acknowledge seniors Carissa Caulfield, Danielle Heinisch, Morgan Hirsch, Madison Jonas, Megan Kennedy, Carolyn Kerr, Samantha Mack, Macy McKittrick, Zachary Sidor Schiffauer, Ashley Wentz, Adela Ancoiak, Abigail Hartzell, and Emily Williams, who received honor cords and recognition of their participation in the French National Honor Society. Congratulations to all of these students. Four Bethel Park High School students received recognition for their performance on the National Latin Exams. Congratulations to silver medalist Madeline Goldsworthy Sedan, Magna cum laude certificate winner Courtney Mans, and cum laude certificate winners Joseph Wright and Ariana Guerra. This year, sixteen Bethel Park High School students were inducted into the National Latin Honor Society. Congratulations to Ken Barnhardt, Nathan Cassano, Emily Kouser, Paige Davinson, Alex DePrampro, Lily Farmory, Elizabeth Hartnett, Alex Kepler, Courtney Mans, Courtney Maslenka, Corey Patterson, Michelle Raymond, Brianna Shannon, Heather Walker, Joanna White, and Jo Wright. Honor cords were presented to seniors Julia Angotti, Emily Augustin, David Erzen, Jeremy Hugh, Carolyn Vanna, and Joey Weston. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School students Kayanne Ofsonka and Jeremy Simsek, who earned the Top of the Shop Awards for the second semester of the 2015-16 school year from the Steel Center for Career and Technical Education. These awards are presented based on conduct, attendance, coursework proficiency, and professionalism. In Moore's Steel Center news, five Bethel Park High School students received the Extra Effort Award for the fourth quarter of the 2015-16 school year in recognition of their outstanding attitude, work ethic, attendance, and dependability. Congratulations to Rebecca Burl, Hayden Dahlstrom, Brian Pietropalo, Jacob Richard, and Heather Van Dyke. The Bethel Park High School Music Department had another successful spring music trip this year to the Festivals of Music in Chicago, where they earned 26 awards, including 10 first-place awards, 10 superior ratings, five best overall awards, and one outstanding award. The Bethel Park tradition of musical excellence does continue. Bethel Park High School was the home of this year's Arts Fest and STEAM Expo, which showcased outstanding artwork from Bethel Park students in grades one through 12, as well as the STEAM Innovation Studios at the high school, where attendees could not only see examples of what our students are working on, but they could also participate in some hands-on activities. It was a great day to gather the community together and celebrate the great things that are going on throughout the district. If you missed this year's event, make it a point to attend next year's event. You'll be impressed for sure. Thirty-eight Bethel Park High School senior student athletes will be continuing their athletic careers next year at the collegiate level. They were recognized for their achievements at the Eighth Annual Bethel Park High School College Bound Student-Athlete Recognition Reception. Congratulations to all of these athletes, and best of luck on the collegiate athletic fields. A new aspect to this year's College Bound Student-Athlete Recognition Reception was the awarding of the highest team GPA award, which this year goes to the girls' basketball team, who had a cumulative 4.0 GPA. Their team name is now on a banner that will be proudly displayed among all the athletic banners that currently hang in the high school gymnasium. Other top GPA teams included the girls' volleyball team in second place, followed by the girls' soccer team in third place, then the girls' cross-country team in fourth, and the girls' swimming-diving team in fifth. Less than one-tenth of a point separated all of these teams. Seven members of the Neil Armstrong Middle School Science Club stayed after school to help food service director Joe Consulmagnow create four pallet gardens to grow fresh herbs that will enhance the meals served in the NAMs cafeteria in the fall. Mr. Consulmagnow made the pallets, and the students filled them with dirt and planted seeds to grow oregano, thyme, sage, rosemary, cilantro, parsley, basil, and chives. The students also said they would stop by the pallet gardens over the summer to help water the plants. Many thanks to Evie Hardware for donating the seeds. Congratulations to Lincoln third grader Charlize Donaldson, whose original story about a butterfly named Beautiful Bella won second place in the third category in WQED's 2016 Writers Contest. Charlie was able to visit WQED to record an audio version of her book, which is on the WQED Write On Kids website. Fourth grade students in Mrs. Muji's classroom at Franklin Elementary School are participating in an embryology project to hatch 22 chicken eggs. Recently, they participated in a candling project to determine if the eggs are fertile or not. The chicks should be hatching this week, and the students will share their findings with their parents at a special program to be held this Friday night. That's not a typo on the slide you were looking at. Memorial's second-grade students in Mrs. Shaw's classroom have been using their Chrome books to correspond with their Penn pals, the second graders in Miss Morrow's class at William Penn. The students began sharing Google Docs with one another in advance to emails. Each correspondence had to include a question that the Penn pal had to answer. The correspondents had the opportunity to meet one another when the Penn students came to Memorial to participate in a STEAM project involving building towers out of dried spaghetti and marshmallows. The activity concluded with a picnic lunch outside on blankets. The students at Washington Elementary School spent the month of April collecting plastic grocery bags to be recycled into building materials. On Earth Day, the students saw the mountain of bags piled on the school stage. The students in Mrs. Williams' fourth-grade classroom helped to stuff every one of those bags into her minivan so she could take them to Giant Eagle for recycling. Thank you for being good students, stewards of the planet. Six teams of William Penn Elementary School fourth graders competed against one another at the Sixth Annual William Penn Fourth Grade Battle of the Books. Students read six books in advance of the competition and worked together to answer 24 questions about the stories. Congratulations to this year's winning team, the Radioactive Readers, Nick Allen, Cassie Robinson, and Grace Skolniak, and to everybody who participated, as they are all winners because they elected to read. And congratulations to the gifted students at William Penn, who retained the coveted Gifted Challenge Cup for the second consecutive year. This year's Challenge Cup was held at Washington Elementary School, and the students worked together on puzzles and competed against one another on games such as Batik, Cubits, Square Up, and Make Seven, scoring points for their team in an effort to take the Challenge Cup back to their schools. It was a fun afternoon of friendly competition that got their brains working in creative ways. Congratulations to Washington first-grade teacher Barbara Walsh, who was one of 150 winners in the Scholastic Reading Club's National Teacher Appreciation Week Contest. Mrs. Walsh was nominated by student Owen Beilich and his mother Colleen. As a winner, Mrs. Walsh received a gift basket from 1-800-FLOWERS.COM and an e-card from Owen thanking her for her daily commitment to instilling in him a love for learning and discovery. And that concludes our report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Student government, no one's here, they're getting ready to graduate. PTA/PTO council, can anybody hear from council? Yes.
We have reports from some of the schools. Abraham Lincoln. Lincoln had its fourth-grade send-off party on May 19. Fun was had by all in attendance. They would like to thank all the students for their spectacular behavior. Thank you also goes to the Pittsburgh Penguins Iceberg, Sound Waves, Red Onion Pizza, Kona Ice, and many others for helping to make it happen. Kindergarten Field Day was moved to Friday, May 20, due to rain on its originally scheduled date. First through fourth grade Field Day is scheduled to take place on May 25. And finally, Rita's Spirit Night was enjoyed by Lincoln families on May 20. From Ben Franklin. The Ben Franklin PTO is wrapping up a very successful year. This past month, they were able to collect items and donate 24 full placement bags for both infants and teen boys entering into the foster care system. This project was led by a Franklin fourth grader. Also, the PTO sponsored a week-long celebration at the beginning of May to recognize the amazing Franklin teachers and staff. The PTO will fill the remaining weeks with field trips, the annual fourth-grade versus teacher kickball game, Olympic Day, and a fourth-grade graduation party. From George Washington. George Washington will be wrapping up the year with some really fun events. Tomorrow evening will be the George Washington Elementary Night at the Ballpark at the Washington Wild Things. All students who reached their goal in the Accelerated Reader Program received a free ticket and will get to march on the field during the Parade of Readers between games tomorrow evening. This Wednesday is their sports day. Students will take part in a variety of games, races, and obstacle courses, and end the day with the class tug-of-war. Next week will be the BOGO Scholastic Book Fair on Wednesday and Thursday. Next Friday, June 3, will be the annual Family Fun Night from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Families can come bounce in the bouncy house, run through the inflatable obstacle course, play games for prizes, purchase raffle tickets for the basket auction, and fill up on hot dogs, hamburgers, and pierogies. And finally, the George Washington PTO would like to thank all their parents who helped make this a great year for the students. Out of Memorial. Memorial had a very successful Teacher Appreciation Week, where they served up homemade food for breakfast and lunch to the teachers and staff. Also, each day was themed, and students were encouraged to bring in items for their teachers. With all the rain that has been coming, Memorial was able to have a great night of perfect weather for Fun Fair. They had many students and families come out to participate in the activities that covered the entire campus. Some teachers and staff even volunteered to be in the dunk tank. The final wave of field trips are taking place this week and next week. Students are going to the Children's Museum, Pittsburgh Zoo, Just Ducky Tour, and a tour of the console arena. Field Day is also next week, where students are going to compete in Summer Olympic-themed activities throughout the school day. And finally, two weeks from now, Memorial will be having a Spirit Night at Twin Kiss Ice Cream. And finally, out of IMS. Eighth grade Fun Day is this Friday at the high school football field. They received lots of donations and volunteers, and would like to thank all of the parents for the great response. Also, IMS is looking for new board members. They need a president, vice president, and treasurer.
Great. Thanks so much. Solicitor's report.
A written report has been distributed to the board for its review.
Thank you.
Follow-up.
And we didn't have any committee reports?
We had one, May 10 curriculum.
Okay. You have anything to report?
We just have a little discussion tonight.
Okay. We are now to the portion of public comments on agenda items. Name an address at the microphone, and please adhere to the two-minute limit. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Laura Huth. I'm the Learning Support Teacher at William Penn, and I currently serve on the ELA Committee as the Special Education Rep. I would like to start out with a quote from John F. Kennedy. "All of us do not have equal talent, but all of us should have an equal opportunity to develop those talents." As one unanimous unit, the ELA Committee recommended Wonders because it not only equips teachers with the tools to effectively instruct students of all abilities, but it also provides our entire elementary team with the consistency that is critically needed across the five buildings, all grade levels, and every classroom. The bar has been raised, and expectations of students have increased. A shift in the way that we teach and the skills that our children are expected to master has occurred. The state has set the standard, and we have responded. As teachers, we have been meeting these objectives in our own ways, supplementing our current program. Our students have demonstrated that they are very capable of meeting these challenges. Our biggest challenge has been piecemealing our instructional tools together on a daily basis. Wonders provides this equal opportunity for all learners and promotes the collaboration of teachers of different disciplines. In addition, the foundational skill building seamlessly lends itself to the increased expectation of children that children are presented with as they transition through the grades. It is this solid foundation that they will build upon that will allow them to each reach their maximum potential. We have to grow children and students individually, each school year, across each grade level. Every child needs to be given this opportunity from every teacher. Wonders is our recommended tool that teachers can use to shape our students into confident, independent, and competitive 21st century learners. Starting to use a cohesive program at the tail end of the elementary education is not enough. We are an elementary team, we are kindergarten through fourth grade, and our students need a program that is as comprehensive as our staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mary Lawera. I live at 1113 Grand Ridge Road here in Bethel. I attended the May 10 meeting regarding the Bethel Park Football Coaching Staff, and I had asked a question at that time regarding how to add this coaching retention and salary issue to the agenda, but was told it cannot be done, as this was a personnel matter. After that meeting, I researched the contract to educate myself. It explains on page 63, "A committee can recommend by a majority of vote that an adjustment is warranted. If such an adjustment is recommended, it will be made effective the following year after ratification by the board." It is my understanding the committee did make that recommendation, in fact, to make a favorable adjustment. I was hopeful the board would trust any administrators on this committee and ratify the recommendation. Looking over the agenda this evening, it appears the committee's recommendation will be overlooked. I also did not see plans approving spring and summer intramural pay. This is extremely disappointing, as these coaches ensure the safety and welfare of our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Sharon Janisak, 4314 Anna Street. I strongly urge you to implement the Wonders curriculum for K through 2, as well as 3 and 4. It's one of the most popular McGraw-Hill ELA programs, and it's been in use throughout the country for four years. I trust that any problems in the materials have already been identified. Bethel's very special. It is a special place, but we're not that special that we're going to find problems other people haven't. The problems that did occur in the 7-8 pilot were technical in nature regarding accessing materials across platforms and following electronic links. Wonders is book-based, we don't have the electronic access, it's an entirely different issue. Any potential problem pales in comparison to the problem we already have. I know that there's a concern about younger children maybe not being ready for the PA Common Core standards. I might share that concern, but that's a state-level issue. The standards exist, and your teachers are already expected to prepare their students to meet the standards. The only difference is that Wonders is specifically designed to comprehensively address them with a wide range of materials and resources to reach students at all levels. It's inefficient to ask them to come up with their own supplements to meet the standards and to find ways to reach children at different levels. It creates a lot of distraction and inconsistency throughout the building, throughout the grade, and throughout the district. Flexible grouping is a wonderful thing, I wholeheartedly support it, but we can't get there until we have at least a common curriculum. I want our teachers and our students to be on the same page so that they can effectively and efficiently work together to push each other to the next level. My children are currently in a cyber charter, they're coming back to Bethel for second and for third grade. My cyber charter uses a curriculum much like Wonders. The close reading, the comprehension, and the thinking skills that they've been exposed to this past year are wonderful. I don't want my second grader to come back to school and lose a year of a great program. Trust your educators. I trust them. They're the ones with the knowledge and the experience to make the unanimous decision to recommend this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patty Offerman. I live at 5430 Park Avenue. As I stated during my last comments to the Bethel Park School Board, we ask for a complete accounting of the $53,000 collected in activity fees deposited into the general fund account. Trust me when I say that we are grateful for the many awesome activities and sports that are available to our children. We are appreciative of the many people who run each of these activities and sports, and we want them fairly paid for their time, sacrifices, and efforts. However, I ask this board again, is the $53,000 collected going towards their salaries? Is it paying for uniforms, bus transportation equipment? Perhaps a better plan would be to follow suit with the Baldwin School District in how they handle their activity fee. They simply collect a $50 check, gather them up, and hand them to their boosters to do with as they please. After all, at least they account for the money collected from their hard-working parents instead of dumping it into a general fund. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Holly Joyce, and I live at 6195 Boxer Drive, and I wanted to come tonight in support of the teachers and to support the Wonders program for the K through the second grade as well. I just think it's so crucial for these children, who are even on different levels, just to all be together, and it supports that, and it supports the core Common Core program, and I think it's a wonderful thing, so I hope we can support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristy Klein, and I live at 1117 Ryle Drive here in Bethel Park, of course. And I'm also here tonight to support these teachers in going forward with this Wonders program for all through K through 4. Please think about it and move forward. I would appreciate it as a parent.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Adrianne Miller. I'm at 1145 Aridale Drive, and I'm also here to support the Wonders program. I think it will be great for the teachers and the students. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Suzanne.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Vegety. I'm at fifty-six eighty-two Maryland Drive. I'm a teacher here. I've taught all of the programs for twenty-two years. When the ELA committee first started investigating programs, I was very concerned with about the letter people. I fought for the letter people. I've taught the letter people since we've taught it here in Bethel Park. When I got the materials and looked them over, Wonders is a very, very good program for the kindergartner to start with. I've noticed many, many more things, very substantial, that'll help the kids get ready for first grade. I was shocked myself, but it's wonderful, which is probably why it's called Wonders. Please consider it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into business items. Curriculum committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are four items this evening under curriculum. Would any like any held out? Yes, I'd like number three held out. Any others? Under curriculum, I move number one, conference requests. Two, the purchase of the Hooten Mifflin Harcourt Reading Collections 2017 for grades seven and eight. And number four, independent study.
Second.
Items one, two, and four, under curriculum committee, have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I move item number three, the purchase of McGraw-Hill Education Reading Wonders 2017 for grades three and four.
Second.
Item number three, under curriculum committee, has been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Ammonitz. Any questions or comments on this item?
I have some. Because of the overwhelming support from the public and from the teachers and the committee and the teachers, I'd like to make a motion to amend the item to read grades K through four.
I don't have a second, so the motion would fail. Back to the original motion as stated.
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Yeah. I've thought long, thought hard on everything. I've listened to all the presentations and have sat through all the presentations and I appreciate everything that was done with it. I do believe it's a fantastic program and as well as sitting through all the presentations, I've read every email that has come out. Everything about the program seems fantastic and I believe that as well, that it's being reinforced because it is being approved up in seven and eight. So let me tell you a little bit why I am making the decision to vote the way I am. Part of it is because I believe our teachers have been hired to, and we hire the best teachers, and the process they do is to come up and they form the committee, they have researched everything, and they have presented that. Now, they have presented it to the board and we hire the superintendent as well, then to get his opinion, as he looks at the whole picture, not just at one building level, but as he looks at the whole building, building level, district-wide level, and of language arts program, how it ties in with every other program through the entire school district. So, I think he made a fair compromise when he said, he also said that he likes to pilot an entire program. And he made a compromise after listening to the presentations and seeing how everything does, to then say, we will implement it in third and fourth grade and pilot it at the elementary level. So, after listening to all the teachers' presentation and hearing the superintendent and recommended that he hired, and based on the compromise that he was willing to come up with, that is why I'm supporting the decision to go with the motion as it is read.
Any other comments?
I'm not sure why we're not following the committee's recommendation. I think the teachers are the experts in the curriculum and for some reason we have changed their recommendation. I don't believe that we are the experts when it comes to that, so I think we should approve the recommendation. So, I won't be voting for this partial program, which only serves third and fourth grade.
And I will be supporting it and I support our teachers. And I believe that by voting this, I am supporting teachers. I am supporting a program that will be brought in to our district. And I'm also supporting a piloting of a portion of a program, because I have sat on this board for thirteen years and I have seen many programs be brought into this district that were shelved. I want to understand more about this program and how it will be used, but I'm making the concession in listening to the teachers and telling me that this is such a wonderful program, to adopt it at the third and fourth grade level and to pilot it at the other levels. Why did seven and eight pilot it for two years? Not one year, two years. They piloted in seventh grade, they piloted in eighth grade. I have no program at NAMM, so I don't have anything cohesive that I'm feeding into anyway. I believe this is the compromise and I believe I am supporting teachers and I believe I am supporting the district in making this compromise vote.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's important that the board hasn't actually rejected Wonders in the K through two. We are piloting. If it is such a wonderful program, it'll prove itself and will eventually work its way into the curriculum, so.
I also want to say that I appreciate the efforts and I know you teachers have all worked very hard and please don't think that we don't recognize that. But as a board, we've also looked at things very closely and we respect the opinion of our superintendent and all the things that are being done. And I do think that this is a fair compromise as far as, because if we didn't support you folks, we could say, forget the whole thing, K to four. And we don't want to do that. We're here for children and we're here to support the educators. And by having this compromise and making things work, and again, K to two, then let's see how the things go with the pilot and we'll go from there.
I just want to comment also, I'm gonna support the motion as written here. But, and it's not, as Mr. Means said, it's not because we're rejecting any part of this, it seems like a good program, but it's a reasonable compromise to roll things out, I think, at a slower pace. I think that maybe as we look forward to other curriculums that we're rolling out, the thing that I was surprised, and I'm new, so I haven't been through this before, but as we've been seeing some of the communications coming at us this week, that there's been no time really built into the schedule to deliberate some of these questions. I think that, you know, we're being asked to take it all or nothing and I don't think that's a good process at all. I think that maybe the lesson learned is, we should be coming to the board with a proposal like this probably in the February or March timeframe. So over the course of a couple meetings, we have more time to really deliberate this a little bit more. So I would say that that, especially when we're looking at a large, a large program like this in the future, we should be moving up the initial proposal date so we have more time to get into some of these issues.
I'd like to add a comment too, also being new and also without trying to repeat what was said here. But I will repeat one thing and I do respect highly what the teachers have done, your opinion and everything else and I would repeat this part too. Like was said, this is why I'm easily able to go and say do K through four, I'm sorry, three and four. But the problem is, I don't wanna see, and being new, I don't know if this is a problem, but one thing I'm fearful of is setting precedence that there's a lot of good ideas out there, a lot of good programs, and if these things come to us because of a great committee that did a lot of evaluation, a lot of work, they wanted to hurry up and put it in without doing a pilot, and listening to our superintendent and reading some things that I read online, it sounds like it's the best way of going is to do a pilot. Maybe too much work was put into it in the beginning and there's too much love in this right now where you guys know better than we do. In a year from now, it might be where everybody's gonna say, yep, it's definitely a perfect thing. And that's what I feel deep down inside, it's gonna most likely be that way. But I don't really see the harm in doing a one-year pilot just to make sure this is, you know, indeed good for the K and first grade and the second grade. So, I know there's some talk about discontinuity and all that, but we've had discontinuity in the past and I think, you know, we can make this thing work for the year and do the pilot, but it's a tough decision, but I have to go with the opinions and what research I have wanted.
And I too have been in the district many years and I think this committee has really done an outstanding job in how they have researched it and had everyone involved. But having been in the district, having been through, I can't tell you how many reading programs, having worked in the classroom and seen some of the programs implemented, I am a little concerned about implementing it K through four right off of the beginning. I happen to believe in pilots. I did a lot of training, that was my pack history, and always pilots worked well because you found out what worked well and what didn't and you could proceed going forward. And we're working with young children and I know you best know them because you work with them every day, you know where all the challenges are. But from our standpoint and from having seen some of the things go forward in the last several years, I feel like we need to pilot this program.
I just have one question. We got information about the cost of the program and so doing it this way, it's gonna cost us about thirty thousand dollars more in consumables and so forth. Is that an accurate statement from the data that you gave us? It's gonna, the consumer, the cost of the materials that we have to buy next year plus the slight increase in the program doing it this way is about thirty thousand dollars more?
The cost of the consumables for the non-piloting classrooms does come to about thirty thousand dollars. However, the original disparity in the cost between the K to four and the split pilot was extremely high and Dr. Pascarella was able to...
It's down to about eight thousand now.
Really, really bring it down. So, the cost of the Wonders materials is roughly equivalent and there is just that matter of the consumables, which is a cost of the choice to pilot and be sure of what's eventually going to be put in place and, yes, that is a cost. It's not nearly as high as it should have been.
Right, to keep the storybooks program.
Yeah, in my, in my opinion, this isn't a decision that is being made on saving ten or twenty or thirty thousand dollars. This is an opinion, at least on my point being made, on trying to do what's best for the children particularly in the lower grades.
Well, Mr. Spicuzzo, you're the only one who hasn't spoken to have anything you would like to add before we...
Yeah, it's always difficult sitting here and not wanting to repeat what everyone has said. I guess I'm the middle-of-the-road board member. I've been on the board about eight years, so I haven't been here as long as some, but more than others. And prior to being on the board, I sat on the citizens curriculum committee for about six or seven years. So I've been very involved in curriculum for many, many years. And to me, we've had some really good adoptions, we've had some that weren't as good, and I think that adopting a program without piloting it, pilot, I can't say that word, piloting it, I think that's a mistake and I think, to someone else's point, I think that's something that should be part of an ongoing process for us. It has nothing to do with the work you did or didn't do. I think you did an excellent job and we commend you for that, I commend you for that. I apologize. But I think the right course at this point is to pilot this and approve the three, four.
All in favor of item three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. No? I carry...
Eight, that's one, me.
Personnel committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are nine items under personnel. Are there any to be held out?
Yes, under number two, I'd like to hold out the football positions.
Okay.
And under number five, I'd like to hold out the closing of the art teacher position at the high school.
Five.
So, we will approve item one, three. Let me see, yeah, one, three is amended, four, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Okay, let me get that down, it's not taken on here. All right. Item one, three as amended, four, six, seven, eight, and nine, under personnel committee, have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Ammonitz. Any questions or comments on any of these items? I have a question or comment on item three, just for the record. We have amended this to include a letter of understanding and the only way I will support this is if we do have a written, signed, letter of understanding. So I am voting on this with the idea that it is outside the collective bargaining agreement but that we believe we have a signed letter of understanding. Any other questions, comments on items one, three, four, six, seven, eight, or nine? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who's carrying nine to zero? Mrs. Rule.
Okay. Item two, we, I move that we approve all extra-duty positions except football to be approved.
Second.
Item two, approving all extra-duty positions except football, has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. Mrs. Rule.
Say item two A, I guess. All extra-duty football positions be approved.
Second.
Who seconded, Mr. Ammonitz? Item two, all football positions, has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Ammonitz. Any questions or comments on this item?
Although I'm in favor of the football program and all the coaches, I will be voting no on this item, but I've been advised by the solicitor to not discuss this.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That item carries eight to one. Mrs. Rule.
Okay. Item five, approval of staffing changes. Do you want me to read all the staffing changes or just...
I think you can make all, make the motion, the item five, except for, excluding one art teacher at the high school.
Okay, I move that we approve item five, all positions except one, including the art teacher position at the high school.
Second.
Item five, excluding the art teacher position at the high school, has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item?
I've been convinced that this, closing of these positions will not affect class sizes. Dr. Pascarella gave us important information about that, so I'll be voting in favor of it.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. Mrs. Rule.
Oh, that's it?
Item five, now you have to close the art teacher.
Oh, and five, I'm sorry, that we, that we, that we move that the art position, art teacher position, that we approve the change of the art teacher position at the high school.
The closing of the art teacher's position.
Closing the art teacher's position at the high school.
Second.
Item nine, item five, closing the art teacher position at the high school, has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Ammonitz. Any questions or comments on this item?
I'm concerned about the impact that this might have on the art program at the high school and also I'm concerned about the impact on the STEAM initiative at the high school without this art teacher, that it might become STEM, so I'll be voting no on that.
Any other questions or comments on this item?
I just want to make a comment that I'm gonna vote in favor because with the information provided, I feel that our students are not going to be negatively impacted from the decision.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That item carries eight to one. We are to Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Spicuzzo.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Seeing three items under Facilities and Services this evening... Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Seeing three items under Facilities and Services this evening, would anyone like any of them held out separately?
Well, we don't have, we don't have the information on number one, so I think we're going to have to hold that out until we have information to put in there. So would you move two?
Oh, then I would like to move the following two items. Item number two, the mechanical equipment for the cooler and freezer at, in the Armstrong Middle School. And the, item number three, purchase of a circulation desk and carpet for Independence Middle School.
I need a second.
Second.
Items two and three under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Spicuzzo and seconded by Mr. Ammitz. Any questions or comments on these items?
Well, I understand we got the twenty thousand dollar grant. Will that be covering the carpet, or how will that be handled?
As we discussed the previously, but just for additional information, in addition to the twenty thousand, carpet and carpet that was listed here is going to be paid for a budget for a sixteen, seventeen budget. So that's, that's what we mentioned. And the circulation desk will either come out of, we have remaining funds as we get close to the closing, fifteen, sixteen, the school year, and/or if not, come out of sixteen, seventeen. So to answer your question, these are two items that were in addition to the twenty thousand dollar grant.
Thank you.
This is where the buses are there too?
No, that'll be under the next item.
Next one.
Any other questions or comments on items two and three under Facilities and Services? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mr. Spicuzzo, I think we need, we need some more information before you can make a motion on item one.
I think we're going to get some information. Mr. Howard.
I'm going to just turn it over to Kevin and Dean over there, and they can have some handouts. We're going to put some information up on the screen. Good evening, everybody. We have some information to share about the Ben Franklin Elementary School renovation project. And we have some big information we go over with you, as well as some recommendations for award of contract. So it's often small, even if that's large scale. Matt, can you get rid of that?
Can you get rid of the outs, can you get rid of the outside window? Janet's going to-
Get rid of that section. If not, we can go over your contract.
Maybe you can fill the whole screen with it. Thank you, sir.
So please do document danger from our office. Can you go over there with you? Trying to get on the screen is a, both a big tab as well as a summary of the minimal scope and the maximum scope, if you recall. We've been leaning towards the maximum scope, and that would be for the phase work of, you know, this summer.
All right. With that, thank you, Kevin. As Kevin mentioned, this is the scope we're looking at for Ben Franklin. We opened bids for this, for part of the work on May third and the other portion on May nineteenth. Those numbers of them have pulled into this chart, which you've seen before, just without the actual contractor numbers. So as Kevin alluded to, at the top, there is a bar that represents the minimal scope. And at the bottom, there's a larger bar that represents the maximum scope. And that's based on work for this summer only, meaning the minimum we would recommend, and then the maximum we think can be completed this summer. Starting with the minimal scope, we're just working our way over. You'll notice the first column is summer two thousand sixteen construction. To the right of that's prime contractor, and then recommended priority, and then scope of work. So under prime contractor, it's just concrete construction. The recommendation is item one, which is base bid, immediate structural repairs for the infill and shoring of the concrete plank. As we keep going over the document, you get to the opinion of probable cost lineum, and then the base bids received, which the bid was three hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is slightly off our screen right now. And then the recommended award, which would be three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We recommend, if we want minimal scope, that be awarded. The item under that is alternate number CC four, which is the replacement of the walls and the floor underneath the main office in lieu of infilling it. The infill was to support the floor. So this alternate was, instead of infilling there, we would just take it out and replace those walls. We are not recommending that option just based on the cost of it. So if you go all the way over, that's zero. Then in addition to that, there is a few items that the district would handle. Those are all listed, main office electrical, which would not be needed since we're not replacing the walls in the main office. Removing the abandoned steam piping system, reconnecting the plumbing at classrooms two through six and underneath the main office, and then some limited carpet replacement related to the patching necessary for the infill work. So that's the minimal scope. As you keep going over the document, there's a scope work of timeline on the far right. That just talks about the duration of time anticipated for the construction to be completed. As we go down to the maximum scope document, which is just below, same setup as we just talked about above. The first contract we'll come to is concrete. There are several alternates listed with that. As we move down the document and go to the recommended priority, these are recommended items number one through eight, meaning we've evaluated based on the highest priority being number one and the lowest priority being number eight. But those are all recommendations we would make to the board at this time. There are a few items you see that have not recommended next to them. We would not recommend at this time the board award those. So if we stay under the concrete contract, you'll see the items, the first one is being the base bid for immediate structural repairs, infill and shoring. That contract is the same contract as mentioned before in the minimal scope at value to three hundred and forty thousand dollars. As you go down below that, you have alternate CC one, which are the remaining structural repairs. That is what we call priority number two item for this. That was bid at two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. We would also recommend awarding that at this time. Alternate CC number two is what we prioritize as the number six item, which is putting corrosion inhibitor on the concrete plank. For the, for just recollection, the corrosion inhibitor is applied to the bottom of the concrete. It'll then go through the concrete and actually attach to the rebar and have a prohibit corrosion from getting worse on the rebar itself. That was bid at sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Quick, back up. Just one question, one question. And this remaining structural repairs is twenty-five percent of the original estimate. Did the scope change at all?
The scope did not.
Or the amount of repairs that, do you go back and look at it again, or what?
The cost of a million dollars that was originally budgeted was related to all of the work that was needed there. And that was based on the amount of labor anticipated to do that work.
Okay.
We, as developing the scope, realized we can make it much easier for the contractor to gain access to those spaces, cutting down their time significantly to do the work. And that was what we talked about, cutting some access holes from outside the building.
Okay.
So in doing that, that's why that cost came down so much.
So we're not doing twenty-five percent of the work now, the seventy-five needs to be done next year?
No, it's all of the work, but we made labor much easier for the contractors, and then we're seeing that directly reflected in the cost reduction.
Okay.
And you don't suspect there would be change orders involved in that, since that's such a discrepancy between?
There will probably be some cost correction in that. On the documents, we identified a certain quantity of repairs necessary. But that was based on the evaluation we did in January. Things could have changed, and there could be more repairs necessary. We have a unit price in the documents for any additional repairs identified that can be dealt with at that, as the contractor's under there.
So I think that maybe to address your question, Mrs. Cook, is the low bid does not reflect that there's a lot of hidden costs that possibly there are, and see some very large change works. The, the change orders that they come is simply going to be, once they get down there and they start doing the work, there may be some additional work identified that would be recommended to do since they're down there. And once, once some of the demolition work and cleaning of the concrete is done, if there's not, we do not anticipate that that exposure is seven hundred thousand dollars worth of work. We have a contingency in place that part of the budget of the project to cover those costs. I think the easiest way of understanding this is when we originally assigned unit cost to this work and it was saying the labor we thought was going to be significantly higher. So if we were conservative, we're just to help the board understand, there could, there could be this exposure. I really want to give credit to Dave Dis, Anthony Andrew. They were gouging that crawl space with a structural engineer about six times, looking at these conditions again and again. And their efforts in identifying the work as well as communicating that work to the two bidders really resulted in very competitive bids and a better understanding of not only the scope of work that needed to be done, but also how they were going to do it. So that really was the kind of, ended up taking a very conservative schematic estimate and then getting to the point where we had a much better understanding of what the scope actually was, how it was going to be done, and that's where we got the bids where they are.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll keep moving along. So the next alternate, CC three, sealant on plank. This alternate is not recommended. This is related to an item we'll get to further down on mechanical. Those two items are linked. We would, we would recommend not doing the sealant work if we do the mechanical ventilation of the crawl space. I'll touch on that in a moment. Alternate CC four, main office wall and floor replacement. This item's not recommended, similarly to mentioned above in minimal scope. This can be handled with just the infill of the crawl space and save Bethel Park School District a little bit of money on that. Alternate CC five, foundation waterproofing and drainage. This is priority item number three. Again, the cost on this is, was forty-eight thousand dollars for bids received. And then alternate CC six, grading and storm piping. This is priority item number four, and the bid received for this was twenty-two thousand dollars. That is all of the concrete contract items. As you can see, we're recommending four alternates be awarded as well as the base bid.
And Andrew, before we go on, again, with alternate CC five, is the large reduction from the original estimate to the bid, is it again similar to, as we investigated, we got better information?
Well, it's, it's that, Kevin, and we actually reduced the scope in this one a little bit. We were going further around and modifying the transformer. We got away from that and simplified it just to keep the cost down. So that, that's why you're seeing that reduction. Any questions on the concrete contract or any of those items?
Just want to make sure, clarifications of more concerns. The two that you dropped down to, to zero there, you decided not to do?
Yes.
Those two were because you're saying that that would be in lieu of, if you're going to get to that on the ninety thousand five hundred ventilation.
Item CC three, sealant on plank, we would not recommend that based on doing the mechanical ventilation below that we would recommend. Item CC four is an alternate from the base bid. The base bid included infilling underneath the office with concrete, a flowable fill.
And you're saying that now we would not need to do that?
It's, it's not, you wouldn't need to do that. We wouldn't recommend that course of action. We would recommend just infilling underneath instead of removing and cutting out the floor and the walls.
You would just infill it, and that would be part of the three hundred and forty thousand dollar job, or part of the additional two hundred and thirty?
Part of the three hundred and forty thousand dollar job was, was infilling there.
And Andrew, if we want, well, let's just jump into the mechanical ventilation later, and that's really the better solution to the moisture issue in the crawl space and sealing the plank.
Yes, instead of putting a sealant on the plank, which would potentially prevent water from getting into the plank, the problem with putting sealant on is if the plank has further spalling issues where the concrete breaks off, the sealant's gone. If we ventilate the crawl space, we're removing the moisture from that air anyway, and that will actually be a better solution because that will never disappear. We'll, we'll just keep pulling that moist air out. Any questions on the mechanical ventilation? All right, then we'll jump back to the general construction contract. Base bid is replace building skin with EPHYS. That was bid at two hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred dollars. This is our recommended priority item number seven. And then alternates-
What percentage of the building skin would be replaced?
Probably about seventy, eighty percent, I would guess. Alternate GC one metal panel. Instead of replacing the building skin with EPHYS, we looked at replacing the building skin with metal panel. We do not believe the district would be getting good value for that under this alternate, so we would not recommend going in that direction. And then alternate GC two window replacement. This is recommended priority number eight. This just makes a lot of sense if we're going to replace the building skin to do the windows at the same time, the two touch. So if we replace the windows in a couple of years, when we would expect them to fail, we'd actually have to come back and repair some of the EPHYS around them, and you'd look like a patch. So if we do it all at one time, we wouldn't have that, that effect. Any questions on the general construction items? EPHYS is like stucco? Is that, okay. It is, so they, they put it directly on top of insulation board. And we're going to make sure we seal it properly this time? Yes. Any other questions?
Just back on that sealant thing, I'm still visualizing, you know, you get this Thompson, concrete sealer and a sprayer and just go-
It's been down there a long time.
It sounds like that could be, even though we don't need to do it because you have ventilation, but what guarantee is there going to be that if we do not seal it, we're not going to see lots of things break in because of whatever other moisture issue there is? Have we sealed it? Would it give us another ten years of life just because it's gone around with some spray underneath it?
Again, just, when, mechanical ventilation, the intent is it'll actually remove the moisture from the air. If we just applied sealant to the concrete without- In addition to?
In addition, like, if you just had somebody go underneath it with a sprayer and spray as much as we could for like a thousand dollars. I mean, you have how many, five gallon cans and spray, I mean, I've sprayed many, many driveways and things like that. And I, I know it's a lot of area, but still, you need a respirator and all that hard work.
Yeah.
But with a sprayer, you can cover a lot of areas. Just wondering if it's worth us spending that extra money to give us more, so it doesn't break apart anymore?
We don't believe it would be worth it, because you're really not adding anything to it. The issue at that point, it's not that it's not going to break apart. The issue is if there's already a problem internally, which if we're seeing, you know, there's already stuff going on internally. What's going to help us is the corrosion inhibitor. The sealant's not going to add anything to that. It's really preventing more moisture from getting in there. Now, if we can control that in a better long-term solution with mechanical ventilation, it's just better dollars spent for the district.
The other, the other issue, again, in your thought on it, is that you couldn't use just a driveway sealer and what we have down there. There, there's certain preparation that has to be done. So it's not quite the same, just, okay, you have a concrete driveway, put a sealer on it, buy a five gallon pump for thirty dollars. So it's a little different. Yeah. That makes sense.
Any other questions on this?
What's, what's the difference in the minimal and the maximal in terms of what it gives us in utility out of the building?
Well, the, the minimal will buy a few years of, of more of life. The maximum scope is with the intent of the repairs we're looking at again for next summer, which is the HVAC system and the lighting. The maximum scope has the eye more for a twenty-year approach, whereas the minimal scope is, is, you know, five-year, more of five-year horizon.
Okay, so if we go with the maximal, then essentially the building is going to be, how do I want to say this? We're going to have a sound foundation and a good structure to work on for a long time.
Yes.
Three hundred and forty thousand, do you project one year or two years, or do you think we'd get more than?
I, I think you could get more out of it than one or two years, but the question's just how long, we can't say for sure. Before you have to come back and spend more money.
Andrew, your question, you need to go back on this was first developed before it asked- Andrew, your question, you need to go back to when this was first developed, the board asked us, because the board was considering, considering options at that time. If we were going to move forward with possibly doing something with Ben Franklin other than keeping it open for twenty years, what, what could we do to just keep it open for one year, buy it more time and decision make? So we developed this minimum scope. This is what you'd have to do in order to safely occupy the building for one, one year. We didn't, we weren't looking at anything beyond, you know, still at all these other maintenance issues, et cetera. But that upon an ongoing basis, but it would be a matter of keeping that school open for one year. That was the charge, this was the scope that we developed. We then looked at the maximum scope, which was, okay, if we want to keep Ben Franklin, if we want to make an investment in that building, what would we need to do? And what could we get done in the summer of two thousand sixteen? And that's what this scope is. So the intention is this summer and next summer, you'd be making an investment of approximately five plus million. And you have a building that would be operational for fifteen, twenty.
I guess from, from my perspective right now, I think that was the charge. I think it's good information that we have in front of us. I think a few years is, is valuable to, to making long-term decisions. So from what I'm looking at, from my perspective right now today, and we'll have time to make, to have more discussion on that, is we're looking at three hundred and forty thousand dollars to, to, to keep it open for a few years inside. Now, we may run a risk, I understand, bids could go up or down in future years if we, if we really goes out. I understand. My, one other comment I did have before I made that as my, I guess, sole recommendation for the board would be this, forty-eight thousand and twenty-two thousand underneath foundation waterproof and drainage and grading and storm might be, I have a question. Could it be that if you utilize that, we might limit the water or eliminate the water? Is that the purpose of this, of the watering getting in there? Wouldn't, if we did that component as well, and I'm not saying we would or we're not, but if, at any rate, we wouldn't want water going to the building no matter how many years that is. I just have a question before I would think about recommending it. Is that, is that something that you believe will, I, I don't want to use the word eliminate, but is that the goal to eliminate the water?
That will help. The foundation drainage and waterproofing is only on one side of the building. We're getting excessive water through the foundation wall.
So even if we did this, it would help?
Yes.
So there would still be areas. Is that why it's scoped down from one hundred and ninety down to there exactly?
No, it's scoped down because we simplified how we were, that there's a transformer in the exact area we need to do this work. So it's scoped down in how we dealt with getting around the transformer, so we didn't have to impact that.
Could, could that work? And I don't know if that's the question you're getting at. Could that work then, which is the alternate CC five, could pull that and done in conjunction with the minimum scope work? Or would that have to be done in conjunction with other work in the maximum scope?
No, that can be done, the, the alternates you see here can be done in any combination the board wants to, to do it. It's, it's just the ones, the not, the numbers, that's why we ranked priority. Like, if we were just to do one, that's how we, we would see the priority of it.
Right. So that's what I was trying to, I think I was kind of asking that, you know, definitely the minimum. But the reason why I was considering that is because it would help us to understand, you were talking, I think some members were talking about, you know, whether we would seal that, whether we would put this ventilation in. Maybe if this drainage can solve a great deal of those problems, we have a better, better understanding that's a possibility. I'm not saying, I understand you're not saying it's going to eliminate. I'm not sure whether or not I would say that I would recommend that component above the three hundred and forty thousand minimum at this point. But out of what I've heard, even though there is a chance that some could go up, that would probably be the one I, I guess.
There's not a chance, they will.
Say that again?
There's not a chance, they will go up. I mean, I, I just want to be clear to everybody here tonight, that the bids you got are very good bids. Like the remaining structural repairs, if you do that next year, I'm going to go out and move and say that'll probably cost you four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do. You're not going to get the same bid next year. This won't happen. So...
Again, you didn't guarantee the change orders either. We can't guarantee whether or not that's going to increase. This isn't exactly the minimum either, so I understand what you're saying, they will go up.
Right, yes, it's, it's, they, they will. I mean, you, you, right now, we, we had a fairly competitive bidding environment. And the amount of work that the two bidders did, we could actually go through the bid tab and show you. It was amazing how close they were, which meant not only were the documents good that they were bidding from, but they were both very hungry for the work. So again, I, I, again, you can choose what you want to choose, but just, I, I mean, that's important to know, that, that's good insurance.
I think it's important to provide the board with the information before they make a decision. My orig, I think you're going back to what we originally charged you with, which was, let's look at this in a few, you know, to keep it open for a few years, as you continue to discuss and make the decision. But I, I can see how you're looking at that reduction as something attempting because it, it will, in your opinion, go up, but...
Yeah, I think if, if, if we want, if we wanted to have that discussion, we should, which is, what, what's in that no man's land of structural issues? And let's talk about some of those one, two, three, or four in terms of what kind of potential problems might the district have if you don't address that issue? You don't have to, but as we, you know, we've had quite a bit of discussions over the last four months about the structural integrity. And, you know, if you don't address them, what are you, what are you taking on? It's not just a matter of pushing some costs down the road. You know, these structural problems could, could get worse, especially with the moisture, if we're not addressing the moisture. So, I, I mean, I think we have to, if we want to reframe the discussion, let's do that, but then let's open it up and then maybe go through them in terms of what parameters does the board want to address? I don't think it's a just either minimum or a maximum at this juncture. We were, we were kind of saying minimum was just if you didn't want to spend any more than you absolutely had to, then that would be the minimum. But I'm not sure we're here tonight to recommend that you only do that and then just kick some of these issues down the road. I'm not sure we would say that, I, we don't think that would necessarily be prudent. We should probably have a discussion about some of the top priorities, again, the ones that we're recommending, recommending and say, okay, what, what might you be looking at if you delay one or two years? Again, you can do it, it's just, I just want the board to be following it forward.
I think the problem is that we, we were thinking at this juncture about the minimal to hold it for a few years to further have those discussions. That's our problem. Then we were delayed by the bidding process because we didn't get the bids in, uh, uh, on time. So we have no, we're here nth degree because we have to make the decision tonight to start the summer work, or then we don't get any of the things done in the summer. I saw what we did at Washington and we went up, you know, we went right up to the last second and so I think...
We're looking like one of the, by three or four years, I think of some of the alternatives that makes sense and still do.
And then I have a concern, as I did when I asked you about change orders, when I look at a figure that's that different, that I haven't changed the scope of work on, then I'm thinking it has to get inflated. There has to be changes that'll come down that path. I, I know from our past bid, I, that's a huge difference.
Yet, but again, you have to, you have to understand the process. I mean, we, we established that price when we didn't have a lot of information and we wanted to put something in front of the board and we assigned a very conservative cost. So that you would, if you decided to move forward, would feel, okay, we're basing it on that cost. We, we now developed that scope over almost two and a half months and did a whole lot of work to better define that, document it, address it, and, and the scope of work changed. In addition to that, you got the bid, so I, I don't, I don't...
Yeah, I, Don, I, I, I understand your concern. I think that, and I think Kevin, you addressed it, or one of you guys addressed it, that you find better ways to access the building, underneath the building. And that, that saved an awful lot of money in that process. And I guess, Kevin, I, I, I appreciate your concern and I think that, to me, if we only spend three hundred and forty thousand dollars, oh, that's putting a Band-Aid on the problem. And like, if we don't, um, let me find the item, I'm sorry. Like the, um, the ventilation of the crawl space. I mean, I, to me, that doesn't make sense spending three hundred and forty thousand dollars and not ventilating that space. We, it's just not going to, we're not, we're, we're not even putting a Band-Aid on it at that point, I don't think.
But if, but if, and if you look at it, that's number five on their priority list.
Yeah, they're recommending...
The, 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 the thing that they're recommending...
I didn't say one through four were bad.
But again, you, you would recommend if you were going to do anything else, number two, which would get the building more structurally repaired, alternate CC one, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And following down those lines.
So, so if we did one, two, three, four, and five, that would be about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that would take care of the water?
If, if the seven hundred and fifty is right, without trying to do the math in my head, um, yes, it would, it would...
It's approx, it's approximate.
Yes, that would, that would go a long way towards dealing with the water and the moisture and the, the degradation you're seeing of that slab.
So one, one, two, three, four, and five, okay?
Again, it, again, just to help you, it, it, the reason it's five is because dealing with the moisture is important to, uh, uh, reduce or eliminate future problems because of the moisture. There is problems due to the moisture and that's what one, two, three, and four are addressing.
Right.
So that's kind of how we came to the priority list.
I understand, thank you.
But I, I, I seem to have like, hurts a little bit of conflicting information here too. On minimal scope, I heard it said, I believe I heard it said that that might get us three, four, or five years. But then I also heard that minimal scope is designed to get us one year. So what, what, what is the recommendation or what do you feel confident that the minimum scope is going to get us in terms of time?
There, there's no exact answer to that question and that's the challenge.
Put a flag on the table and say, if you want to buy three to four years, you want to do at least up to five or six of the properties. The EFS and the windows, again, we were recommending them, but you, you wouldn't have to do that. You could keep it and monitor and maintain and, you know, do your best to stay that off.
Well, I, I agree with Pam, except for I think it doesn't make any sense to not do the six and put the, the corrosion inhibitor on. But if we did one through six, we should be solid in that building for a number of years, correct?
Yeah. Structurally.
Structurally.
And if we wanted to, if we wanted, if we decided over the next year that we're going to make a long-term commitment to the building, that you could do seven and eight also next summer, right? Even if while you're doing HVAC and all the other changes, right? It wouldn't extend the construction of that project?
No, we would not see an impact related to that. We could do both concurrently and they are separate from each other.
Yeah, so there's not an imperative on seven and eight like there is on the structural repairs of one through six, right?
There's more of an imperative on...
It's not an imperative. You can do seven and eight and the other six.
Yeah, okay.
These two contractors that are listed here, they're the only two that bid at that, is what, well, I'm hearing first, all right?
The, the names you're seeing which are listed, Gertner Construction for Concrete in General, they will be the low contractor. Mannheim, who's not listed, are the ones who bid against them, bid against Gertner for concrete. They were just second, that's why they're not on here. Lugela, who's listed for mechanical, is a separate contractor and, and they just do mechanical work.
Okay, and how are they rated? I mean, good? Good.
Ron, Gertner's been in the school business for twenty-five years?
Haven't.
My guess in twenty-five, at least twenty-five.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know anything about the school, you know, until you, you know, they're good.
I, I do know them, yes.
Eight plus rate or something like that?
And Lugela's done a lot of the recent mechanical work at the different buildings the district's had. So...
I think my concern is that the board hasn't had a discussion about the length of time you want this building.
That, that's right.
That's the biggest concern I have, is that we were talking about buying time to have that discussion versus putting more money into the building without having had that discussion. So I guess, that said, I'm, I'm concerned that we're going down this list of, uh, items that I'm not...
If, if you felt to be, I mean, when did the board get together to talk about them?
Yeah, well, and that's, again, you know, like I said, we would have had that discussion, had the bids come in sooner, so we could have had that discussion before this meeting. And then also, as I say, we're up against it if we're going to start a summer project, we, we have to obviously make that decision. I, I don't like the way all of the timeline worked out in, in, in all of this. And I don't know that that discussion is even a one-meeting discussion, that's an ongoing discussion because we need to have study on many...
I think it is, how I...
I'm just sorry, the, the, the physical decision, that, that's going to be a three or four-year process, whatever we would decide to do. But the, what we have to do educationally is something that Doc has to stud, to study. And that's going to take a while for him to get that together as well.
Yeah, I, I think that's a major change, one that I know personally, I know where you're ready to recommend. I think, I don't know if the board is either. We have to, my opinion is we have to talk with community, parents, staff, really talk all of that through. I mean, at this given point, what we're hearing is, just judging, uh, from, from what I am hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you can't guarantee, but you are looking at a few years. That's, that's probably going to be the minimum, uh, from your professional opinion. But if you do the minimum option, you're going to buy a few years, which then allows for more, more discussion before we invest money. Because I think what happens next is as we continue to invest more money, then we're going to go on to the next page. And by the time we're done, we're looking at this sheet, the bottom number there is six millions plus.
Well, I, I was hearing that differently though. I'm hearing that they're recommending to get the, if, for them to feel comfortable saying that they're recommending the three to five, three or four years to wait to make the decision. What I am hearing is they're taking, that they're suggesting to take a few items from the maximum scope, items one, two, three, and four specifically, and add them to the minimum scope. That's what I was hearing.
I, I, I think I heard that again too, but I, I guess I, I agree with you, that I've heard two different items, you understand, I think you can't guarantee that, but we're looking...
The minimum scope will get you one year. That's what we're saying. And you, I got to monitor the concrete...
That changed.
And determine what kind of repairs you need to do next year.
And, you know, like Andrew said, nobody knows when concrete will fail, okay? But we are aware, we are aware today that there are initial signs of, of corrosion. And so I think that the board, knowing that, we have to take some action. I think that, um, over, before we have any other location to send the students, it's going to be a four-year process to probably evaluate other sites, build other buildings, have another alternative. I think there's probably greater than a fifty percent chance, much greater, that we'd have to spend another three hundred thousand dollars some point in the future to do this second phase. So I think that the risk of, you know, if we, if we take a look four years from now, I think that the, the, the likelihood that we're not going to have to spend probably an extra four hundred thousand dollars over that minimum bid is, is pretty low. I think we're going to have to do it, only because we know that there are signs of, you know, cor, corrosion. And you can't predict, you, you can't predict exactly, you know? I kind of understand what you're saying in terms of the, you know, fatigue of, of concrete, it just can't be predicted.
My, my biggest concern is the water and the damage and, and the ventilation. So I, I think we need to go beyond priority one, up to maybe five or six, because of the water. Because even one or two or three years, we need to take care of the water.
That, to that point, that's why I was semi considering that.
Three and four.
Three and four, because we would be able to see if that, if that solved the problem. Or I won't use the word solved the problem, but greatly reduces the amount of problem that you're having. I did want to hear it, Mr. Disch, do, do you concur with that, that, that this is going to only, the, the minimum would only get us one year?
I wouldn't go too much more six months after that, number one. The water is what has caused the problem in the first place. So to me, solving water is, uh, uh, that's why it's at three and four, um, in my opinion, as far as priority, okay? Is, is one year or, you know, a year and a half not a reasonable time to go through the process and make a decision? So that at that point in time, we can plan or, or do whatever we need to do for that next summer's activity? I'm just...
Well, I'm not, I'm not positive, I, I, I can't answer that for sure. It's going to be a lengthy process, I would assume, and that's just an assumption. I mean, because you're, you're talking, you're talking about, it's, it's my initial impression, and you could be wrong, because it's very new, that, you know, neighborhood schools are going to be important to constituents within the districts. So that being said, there's a chance that, uh, that might, that might be a heavy consideration, what the board ends up deciding. be a heavy consideration, what the board ends up deciding or what I end up recommending. So, I don't know how long precisely that would take. What I am concerned about, I guess, I wanna make sure I do say this. And I'm not an expert in this, but I, I do have some concern with the movement and how long we're estimating this is gonna go. From, from one year now, just to operate, it was three or four years, now that. I know you can't guarantee that and I understand that I'm asking for a guarantee. But it seems to me like, yes, I, I also concur that we might have to look at the water. But what we're risking, as I understand it, from what your, your opinion was, is that the bids then could go up and then we could end up spending more money. I hear that, that's a risk that I think you have to decide, is that worth taking? Personally, I do think that there, and, correct me, you can say, no, you disagree and that's fair. But when I was looking at three and four, wouldn't that give us some idea if we were able to, to, to limit the amount of water?
No, not necessarily. Let, let's, I'm just gonna do a quick review and Joe, I, I, I feel bad, we didn't have a chance to have this discussion before the board meeting tonight, but it's important to get it out. The moisture is not just being caused by water moisture coming out through the foundation. There, it, the crawl spaces have trapped air. There's no ventilation through there. And so there's trapped air over the course of the last twenty, twenty-five, thirty years. Just simply humidity getting in and out of there, condensing at night and, and, and that causes moisture to settle on the underside of the slab. So right now, you have deteriorating concrete that's ongoing. If you did nothing, it would still get worse. So i- if you did the, if you improved the foundations and all that, it would still get worse, because you have, it's already deteriorating. So, in terms of the moisture, you've got the fact that you've got damaged structure. And Andrew, why don't you share what the structural engineer told you about how long that can last without being attended to?
The structural engineer recommended us the base bid, he would not recommend opening those portions of the school that are affected next year. So, his recommendation on the base bid was a one to two-year approach based on the letter he gave us, um, for those base bid items. And that's just what's seen today. He's then recommending if that's all that's done today, someone will come back and re-inspect it on a quarterly basis to make sure further deterioration also isn't compromising some other area of the building.
Who are the inspectors?
We had two different structural engineers visit the building, Capstone Structural Engineers and MR Structures. Both of them came to the same conclusion.
It just seems to me that it's a no-brainer. No, no matter what we do, we're gonna have to keep that school open for a number of years. Um, it's one of our larger schools, even with decreasing enrollment, if we would decide to close the school, it wouldn't be that one. It, because we create more problems than closing a smaller school. If we keep it open and wanna keep it open long-term, we're gonna have to do this. I, I don't see any way that we're gonna be able to get away from doing the basic structural things that we have to do.
And, and maybe the town, the board may need some more time, but I wanna ask you, Andrew, when you had this discussion, but how long could we wait until a work contract, I mean, a week, two weeks, three weeks, I mean, where does this go?
From a schedule standpoint, from the contractors, they were looking to get under a contract quickly as possible, assuming they could start June thirteenth, which is what we have in the documents. From there, they're projecting to take all the way out of what we assumed to be the end of September to complete the structural repairs. So that's base bid and the, um, remaining structural repairs.
What would be the timeline of that, would, would, um, the base bid number one, would that be something they would do first before they'd start into the rest of it?
No, they would have sep- we were told they would have separate crews to deal with both issues.
Which ones?
So they would, they would do base bid, which is infill, slightly different contractor, so he's pouring concrete into a cavity versus a specialty contractor who's doing physical repairs to the planks.
Okay, so this would all be going on at the same time?
Yes.
Okay.
Is, is the physical repair number two, physical repair to the planks number two?
Yes, there is a, a limited amount in the base bid.
Okay, all right, I just, I just wanna make sure.
If, if we waited a week, what, what might happen and how would we deal with it?
If, if we waited a week, we would just need to add a week likely onto the end of the schedule to complete the work.
If we had two weeks, same thing, so Dave, I'm gonna ask you, what would your sense be at the end of the job, I mean, if it was two weeks to the start of the school year, what? Essentially, I think it might be, my guess, I'm gonna ask you, Dave, comment, could be, they would have to work on the, in the cavity throughout the whole school, um, but do it quietly.
Yeah, there, there's work that's gonna take place underneath that building that can be done quietly. A lot of the work is, is spray materials, it's with, uh, slushing of materials off top of existing, uh, concrete, so that can be done offshore without disturbing the kids, okay?
And the moisture work would be in, in upfront, that it's.
And if there would be anything that we would know, uh, up, up front, it's gonna be a, a problem for, uh, instruction will schedule it at the second shift, four weekends, you have to get it done.
So no, no students, just to be clear, are gonna have to be moved, we're not gonna have to alter our schedule.
If we delayed this bid, uh,
We might.
Couple of weeks, no, no, not, not needed to be done, no.
And if we accept either two weeks or today, with no students, I'm just gonna make sure that's clear, no students, there would be no disruption, we'll start as we have the schedule.
As we see the schedule right now, yeah.
Michael, I have a question for you. This whole discussion as, as to the scope of the amount of work that we're gonna do, that all has to be conducted in public, correct?
That's correct.
Has to be, I'm sorry, I missed.
Conducted in public.
Conducted in public. You can receive information in, in a private meeting, that's not an executive session. So to the extent that these individuals would bring you information, that would be sufficient. However, if this board then started to deliberate over what to do, that discussion would have to occur in a public meeting because it does not meet one of the, uh, purposes of executive session.
So can somebody just.
I'm not saying that the board is going to wait two or weeks, but if we did, if that is a decision that you're gonna do, I don't know how, this is another question I have, you had two folks come in, and are there anyone else, is there another engineer that would be able to come in and confirm that that is accurate, that we would only be able to hit that? I mean, is that something that we'd be looking to do if we extended the conversation or no? I mean, if not, then I think you have the information that you have today, I'm not asking you for a rushed decision. We could still wait, but my, my theory on that would be you had Capstone and MR Structures, I believe it was.
Yes.
So, I mean, if, if we were going to wait, is that worth even getting a third opinion to say we're not?
No. Don, can I say a couple of things? To, to Mr. Means' point, I think that, um, I think it was your gentleman made the, the comment. If, if in a year and a half, we don't know where we're going with the building and we have to do something differently, at that point, it's gonna cost us more than the few extra dollars that we're gonna spend tonight. Uh, I, if you do, if you do everything but seven and eight, it's eight hundred and thirteen, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. If you take off six, it's seven forty-six, five hundred. So, uh, Kevin, comment on leaving those three items out? Six, seven, and eight?
Six, seven, eight. Again, I think seven and eight would be your choice. I mean, that, that, that is easy to separate and you, it's kinda good now, good later, it really won't impact the viability of the buildings and, and the lives. And I'm, I'm actually gonna defer to the answer about corrosion and enter applying.
Andrew, what do you think?
The, the corrosion inhibitor will help, but you still may see deterioration even if you apply it now.
But I mean, it, it, as part of all the other items included.
Again, it's ranked where it's ranked, six being the last of the items that, you know, would probably be most urgent in terms of, of preventing damage. If, if we were trying to back that off, then yes, I think six could be eliminated, um, but we would still recommend obviously doing it.
So, if, if we did everything but seven and eight, that would approximately run us eight hundred and thirteen, five hundred dollars. Anybody have thoughts about that?
Make the motion.
Yeah, I tell you, the, the one thing, and this is maybe more on the legal side, it makes me nervous that this documentation references structural repairs, meaning that, you know, we know that there's defects. So I, I don't want to vote to not fix defects if it's over an extra three hundred thousand dollars, uh, to fix that. I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable personally, okay? I am an engineer, okay? It makes me nervous.
Yeah, I, I, and, and I'm in agreement, I understand they're trying to save the money. But I, in, in, in the end, it seems as if we're talking about doing this for the three to five years, that it's gonna take us to study this information. And again, if we wait that a year, a year and a half to get these other bids, we might be paying more money than we're gonna be paying now to get those other things done. So, I, 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 I can support and support comfortably going with the alternates two, three, four, and five. And not necessarily using the six because you said it may do not even.
Like, I can comfortably support going for that.
Surrounding hundred.
It's gonna take us several years to make that decision on Ben Franklin there, is to, like, that, have these costs keep coming in. There is a breaking point.
Yeah, because there would have to be the thing, for, for example, to decide what to do with the, with, with the building, to find other grounds, to find, get designs drawn up for something, if, if that's a possibility, to do educationally, to see if you are going to do something, uh, whether you're going to, uh, recommend saying with the same community schools or do other things, you gotta get the community involved, the meetings involved, and those things take a lot of time.
And it's not just the timeframe to make a decision, but it's how long are you committed? So if we're committed to that building for probably four years minimum, you have, you have to make the, during that whole time of making the decision, determining to go to another building, building to the building, what, whatever, to finally be able to open up the doors. It's, you, you gotta be committed to the building during that entire time.
Yeah, so this is why I'm asking, so if we're gonna establish that we have to have, what, three to five years, somewhere in that range, then we have to go and try to get these things repaired to allow us for the three to five years. Even though it's painful looking at all that money being spent for, you know, things that should never happen. Uh, these things should've been probably sealed and air should've been flowing underneath. I mean, it's, I mean, our house is built in nineteen sixty, so, well, the addition was in like eighty-two and there's, that's underneath crawl space. I mean, that's known things, I, I don't know why that was built where there wasn't no air circulating underneath there at first place, that's something I'm confused about.
Just on this option, one other point, you had said on the other one, it would be about a year or six months, one other question before we go. This, this option that we're now talking, which is not six, seven, and eight, the rest, um, what is your anticipated amount of years for that?
Well, for the structural repairs themselves, we're, we're looking at, you know, again, probably ten years, maybe the timeframe, and then it could, again, there's gonna have to be maintenance, maintenance on that, um, because it'll be minimal, and then, you know, the proper maintenance should last quarters. Again, if they, that'd be stabilized, the structure.
Are we ready for a motion?
And when you're saying maintenance on that, you're meaning that annual cost that they had quoted?
Well, we had said, it's not as we have to go down on an annual basis and look to see if there's any further expansion there, so, you know, if, if there is some flaking of the, of the, uh, or the, the spalling of the concrete, that it has to be repaired, et cetera.
Do, do you have a ballpark figure on what, uh, to have them check that annually, what that would be?
I, I.
I think that's gonna be a function of what you find, and I think if you're gonna choose to find deterioration, it's something you're gonna have.
So I'm gonna have to have a structural engineer each year to come in and just do that cursory check of the, the area? What, what, what would you say that is?
Twenty-five hundred dollars, yeah. And then they're gonna charge one year to come out.
And then whatever they find and the recommendation to correct what they find each year.
I have a question, please, Mrs. Cook, and maybe this was asked before, but there's so much information going back and forth here. If we go with everything except number eight, what will be the situation with the water? Will the water problem?
We're going with everything but seven and eight, I think is what we're gonna make, yeah.
What does that do as far as the water issue?
I, I'm sorry, I'm not following the question.
If we did alternate one through six,
Yes.
Okay.
What happens with the water problems we're having right?
The, the intent would be with one through six, it would, I don't wanna use the word eliminate, I know we've thrown that out there, but it would greatly decrease any water issues that are causing the problems in the building itself.
Okay, to, to expand upon that, the way I understand that, there would be piping in place to divert some of the groundwater.
Yes.
There would be ventilation to remove humidity.
Moisture in the air.
And there would be sealant on it to protect it from anything that did remain, if we did one through six.
Sealant is not in one through six, sealant was not recommended.
Corrosive and.
Corrosive, corrosive and, yes. The corrosion inhibitor, yes.
Yes, okay.
Are we sure there are no springs or anything under that that's also adding to the water problem?
We can't be sure of that, no.
So we could possibly, I mean, I know there's a big water issue on that, that building. It has been three years on that ground.
You know, we don't, we don't know what's causing the water, honey, there is some water coming against the foundation, so what? If another location is source of the water, some, some.
Well, it doesn't make, make any difference where it's coming from, if you drain it a week, it's more.
We're simply creating a path for that water to get around the building. So, it's not an issue for the door.
It's gonna be an issue for somebody, the next.
Around the wall around us.
Ready for a motion?
Russ will, Russ will make whatever motion, or.
Russ, one through six.
I guess, I'm ready.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to move, uh, the, um, the motion to accept, uh, uh, items one through six.
Second.
It's approximately a hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
I need this contractor's name.
Uh, yes, I think in, uh,
Would you second me?
Hey, Russ.
Gertner, Russ.
Gertner Construction.
Gertner Construction for the.
Seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Russ.
And the Galley Mechanical for ninety-eight thousand five.
That's correct.
Voice, voice vote.
Hmm?
Roll call vote.
Uh, do you wanna do a roll call vote on that?
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, I can do a roll call vote, it's fine.
How should you say this, the, my voice?
I can repeat those, it's, uh, Gertner Construction, you're all ready. Um, it's one, two, five, and six, and then, uh, the Galley Mechanical, base bid of ninety-eight thousand five hundred.
What happened to three?
Um, so, well, those are, I, I was reading the alternates for the record, because that's what I need, I need the alternates for the record.
Did you name them?
So they, they would be the next numbers in, it'd be CC one, CC two, CC five, and CC six, two over.
Okay.
And that's for a total of seven hundred and fifteen thousand.
Something's missing.
Yeah.
No, it isn't, that's right.
Seven hundred and fifteen.
Seven, seven fifteen, ninety, ninety-eight five, that's the eight thirteen, five hundred. That's the number.
That makes it eight thirteen five, because you moved also the alternate that was ninety-eight five to Lugalia.
Yeah. That's what we were talking about.
Okay.
Any questions or comments on this before we do the roll call vote? You gonna do a roll call?
Mr. Ammons? Yes. Mrs. Poplin?
Yes.
Mr. Kirsten?
Yes.
Mrs. Cook?
No.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mrs. Rule?
No.
Mrs. Spicuzza?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
What does your pass say?
Yeah, oops, this thing messed up again. We are on to Finance Committee and Mr. Ammons.
Well, hang on, my computer's off.
I know.
I just, I just.
I, I went black.
We're just gonna.
Yeah, we still have executive session.
Uh, we have seven items under Finance Committee. Would anybody want anything to hold on for discussion? Hearing none, I move items one, May sixteen, two thousand sixteen, salaries and bills. Number two, April two thousand sixteen, financial report. Number three, budgetary transfers. Number four, Pathfinder for administrative budget. Number five, DSBA membership due renewals. Number six, reject and reawarding of transportation equipment. And number seven, approval of the purchase of the information technology software.
Second.
Items one through seven under Finance have been moved by Mr. Ammons and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I have a question on those buses because I, I just don't see it here, and I just wonder, how many miles are on those buses and what year, like, how old are those? Because you're replacing them.
They, they do not have the mileage on, on, in front of me, I can get that for you, but they're, the buses are probably twelve, thirteen year old.
About thirteen, and when is the typical life?
We try to rotate our buses every ten or eleven years, and we put them in the spares for a couple of years, uh, so, um, that's, that's our, that's what we've been trying.
It, it, I mean, just curious, I mean, like, I got a car that's sixteen years old and all this stuff, I mean, I, I just, I'm curious as to, buses, I guess, we need to keep them newer because of more.
Sure, we have an annual state, uh, along, along with our regular inspection, we have an annual state inspection. The state police come in with every one of our buses and make, you know, sometimes they take buses off the road, very rarely in our case, but the longer you would keep our buses.
but the longer you would keep a bus, the more risky that could be.
So are these actually getting marginal right now, or is it just because of years that we do it automatically?
Sure, most of the time our buses, we lose more components of the body than the engine. Um, and that's usually where we find problems, it's just within the bodies of the, of the buses, not so much the engine. Occasionally, you know, engines have issues also.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Finance items? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Proposed, those items carry nine to zero. Policy Committee and Mr. Means.
There's three items under the Policy Committee. Would anybody like any of them held back? Seeing none, I move one, that the poly- uh, policy revision regarding, uh, number two seventeen graduation requirements. Uh, number two, a waiver of the procedure for the, uh, three readings for Policy eight twenty-three administering the lock zone. And number three, the revision of, uh, the second and final reading for the approval of, uh, eight twenty-three administering the lock zone. Be approved.
Items one through three under Policy Committee have been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mr. Christensen. Any discussion on these items? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Proposed, those items carry nine to zero. Public comments on anything you wish to address the board on, you have two minutes at the microphone, name and address, please.
Hi, Pam Kwakawski, twenty-three thirty-one Wells Drive. So I just wanted to say that sitting in these meetings, um, the last few meetings, has been a very eye-opening experience for me and many others. You're elected by the community to do what's right for our kids and spend our tax dollars for that purpose. But sitting here, it seems that you do the exact opposite. We have six hundred, almost six hundred people in the community that signed that petition that is telling you that we want our, um, our football coach, our coaches, um, paid appropriately and fairly. And we noticed that the stipend for the football was not approved or addressed at all. This means our coaches will not be compensated for the work they've already done in the weight room and spring ball, and that you are expecting volunteers for now the summer government mandated program and the practices to prepare for the fall, the which puts our children's safety at risk. We have kids benching three hundred and twenty pounds, so possibly unsupervised going forward, just so you know that. And maybe the, um, you know, the, the lawyer can explain who would be responsible if something were to happen to that, inevitably what would happen to those kids. So you should be putting the safety of our kids first, and it's very disheartening to me and to others that your own agendas take priority over the kids' safeties. Just want to put that on record. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move into Board Comments then, Mrs. Dobus.
I think I talked enough during this meeting, I don't have any comments tonight.
Mr. Means.
I'm tired too.
Mrs. Barclay?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Cook, I have a few things I'd like to say. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank my fellow board members and all the administrators who have devoted countless hours to making many decisions based on a variety of reasons, but most importantly, the children of Bethel Park. And also, I'd like to thank the parents, the PTO, PTA members, teachers, staff, and students of Bethel Park for all of their efforts this year. It's hard to believe that the school year is coming to an end, it's their last formal meeting for this particular school year, and I'd like to wish everyone a relaxing summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spicuzza.
I haven't really kind of talked out myself, but I would just hope that the, the, the type of, um, attendance we've had at our last two meetings would occur more often. I think the more people would understand exactly what we do and how we do it and the decision process that we go through. This isn't a one, one night or one meeting decision. Uh, after, I forget when, was it the May tenth meeting? I got home at quarter to one, so I don't think we take our jobs, uh, I think we take them very, very seriously. And it's, and, uh, you know, to me, please show up. I would, I would love to have everybody show up all the time. I think that the process really works better when people come and pay attention to what we do.
And, and I hope that the public realizes this is a voluntary position, there, there is no pay to school for it. Mrs. Roll.
Along with this meeting, we do have to represent the school district at other meetings too. I mean, we do have a voice in, in what's happening in the state and also what's happening at the Connie level. Uh, to that respect, I just want to say that Dr. Hipper was awarded the, um, Woman of Distinction Award in Education uh, from the Girl Scouts of Western Pennsylvania, so that was a nice honor for the Allegheny Intermediate Unit Leadership for us, especially for the females that are represented in this category. Uh, other, other thing I'd like to say is there were over three hundred events over the weekend, on the weekend of the fourteenth, I believe, for Remake Learning in the county, and that was a record. So that just displayed how much the STEM learning and all of that goes into effect all over the county. So that was quite a few activities going on. The other thing is that, um, coming up this summer, there's going to be, the Steelers are going to have a recognition for teachers, and they're going to ask for nominations, and I'll have more information on this in a couple of weeks, but they're going to be honoring teachers of innovation and going to be quite a, um, an honor by the time they get finished, but they're putting all the criteria together. But you're going to get, there'll be a, a monetary award of a thousand dollars, there'll be, um, Steeler tickets to a couple of games. So there's quite a basket of things that these teachers will receive. But they'll be looking for fifteen teachers to be nominated as Innovative Teachers of the Year. And they'll be recognized at the Steeler Games too. So I'll keep you posted on what the criteria is, if, that we can get any nominations from Bethel Park, that would be great. Um, and that's, and one other thing, Steel Center was also evaluated and recognized as one of the best, um, technical schools in the state. And I thought that they've come a long way, and we were really proud of that.
Super, thank you. Mr. Workmeister.
Well, since it's ten thirty, I will make a very short, uh, first, congratulations to everybody that was being announced on, uh, by Dr. Dieter on the, uh, school district and the students and everything else, and thanks for all the people that were here, the attendance, it is important, but I also just wanted to, uh, go on record to say, uh, well, you know, today was a special welcoming party for Dr. Passerella, and, uh, just wanted to say thank you for being here, and, uh, I'm glad seeing all the words of, uh, Boma.
Mr. Christensen.
Yeah, I just had one comment from the, uh, the, the notes that Dee went through on the, uh, the DECA club. You, you know, I, I have an inside scoop since my wife is involved in that, but that is an organization that's really fantastic, and as I've come to know it, in terms of, uh, the skills that that club helps, uh, students develop in, in terms of putting together simple business plans, communicating some basic thoughts and ideas, and then selling those ideas, because at some point in everybody's career, you're selling. You're selling yourself, you're selling, you know, an idea, and it's really a, a, a critical skill. And, and I think that, uh, you know, when I look back, I, I, uh, I grew up in rural Minnesota, so I was in a similar organization called Future Farmers of America, FFA, but it stood for Fathers Farm alone in my case. But, you know, it, it taught similar types of skills, and I can look back and there's, you know, you, you, you actually, you know, use those skills throughout your life. So I want to say that, that, you know, the, the DECA organization, I think Connie, they do a lot of work for you. Mrs. Smoller does a lot of work for you also.
For state, estate, and other state, uh, projects.
And, and, you know, the club this year was at the national level, saw tremendous success at the national level. So it's, it's a, uh, fantastic organization.
Great, thank you. Mr. Ammons.
I have all the comments this evening.
Well, I see Dr. Spalaris sitting back there, and that's the first time I've seen him since he got his doctorate, so I wanted to say congratulations, and I wondered now that you're a doctor, I guess you don't make the bakva va anymore, huh?
There's, there's a big hand coming in too. I want to thank the workers that supported the major, uh, for that honor.
Congratulations. And I want to wish best wishes to our class of twenty sixteen. I so look forward to graduation, that's my favorite activity as a board member, so I look forward to that in June. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All in favor? Good night, everyone.